All right, motion is second, all in paper I.
All right, then we've come to presentations and it appears that we're gonna hear from Trillium Health mid-year report. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Karen Thompson and the initiatives. And I typically.
You can add live if you want. Have any good jokes or series?
All right, do I hear any adjustments to the agenda?
If no adjustments, I'll move.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Okay, close session prior to other business.
I'll move approval with that change.
I'll second.
All right, motion is second, all in paper I. And next up is public comment and I just handed the sheet and we had no one sign up for public comment this evening. So we'll move down to approval of the consent agenda.
I'm more for a pool.
Got motion.
I'll say.
Yeah, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in paper I. Very good. All right, then we've come to presentations and it appears that we're gonna hear from Trillium Health mid-year report. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Karen Thompson and the initiatives. And I typically.
Technically. You can add live if you want.
You have any good jokes or series?
Well, I appreciate you helping out. Typically, I provide a report on an annual basis that's more focused on our overall services. And initiatives that we have launched throughout the year along with annual data. But there has been a lot that has happened over the last eight months and so I felt like it would probably be too much to wait a year to provide an update. So I wanted to talk through some of the things that happened with Medicaid, the launch of Trillium Taylor Plan. And some, you know, impacts throughout our system. Before I do that, just always want to give thanks for Commissioner Cook for serving on our regional board. And County Manager, City County Manager David Stanley for serving both on our regional board and our governing board. We appreciate Brunswick County's commitment to our boards and to the oversight of Trillium and the input that you all provide. And how we're able to deliver services for folks in the county. So thank you very much. So just a reminder, Trillium Health Resources is the local management entity and managerial organization. We serve only six counties in North Carolina that includes Brunswick County. And so as an LEMCO, we provide or we cover a couple of different health plans. Primarily a Medicaid specialty plan for individuals who have the most significant substance use mental health and developments with disabilities. It includes traumatic brain injury. So as a reminder, before Medicaid transformation in North Carolina, which has been an ongoing process over the last couple of years. We had folks with Medicaid being covered through one health network for their behavioral health. And that was with all the LEMCOs covering behavioral health side. And then a separate network covering physical health. And so the state began the process of Medicaid transformation where the majority of Medicaid members would receive care under the WILM health plan. So they launched Medicaid transformation with the standard plans first. And standard plans are those Medicaid health plans that are covered under commercial plans. So Healthy Blue, American Health Care, WellCare, United Health Care, and Carolina Complete Health are your standard plans. So they're covering around 70% or so of the Medicaid population in every county in North Carolina. Recently, Trillium launched as a tailored plan. So we launched our whole person care health plan in July of this year. And so we are covering both the physical health benefits and the behavioral health benefits for our members throughout our counties. We do that alongside the three other LEMCOs via Alliance and Ferner's Health. Next slide. So a lot of questions that we receive are around what's the difference between a standard plan and a tailored plan? So standard plans and tailored plans offer the same basic service array through Medicaid. And that's typically on the behavioral health side outpatient treatment and medication management. More recently, standard plans were able to offer substance use intensive outpatient services and comprehensive outpatient treatment. And that's the same efforts to really get folks into maybe a higher level of sort of constater as soon as they need it. Rather than having them wait to switch over to a tailored plan to get access to that service. Because we know people are still struggling with opioid addiction and we want to get them into care as soon as possible. And then another service that's available through both of us is the child first early intervention. For tailored plans, because our members have more significant mental health, substance use, and mental disability needs. We cover a separate set of benefits that are enhanced services and residential services. So you'll see those listed. That is not a complete list on your screen. But it includes things on the child side like adolescent day treatment, intensive in-home multi-systemic therapy. On the mental health adult side, you'll see psychosocial rehabilitation. And then for substance use, involuntary detox is one of the services. And then I also provide residential services. So for individuals who are not able to live in the community without support. Or need a longer term residential service for substance use, you'll see a couple of those services listed there. Next slide. So a couple of things about Taylor's Plan launch. We were able, after a couple of delays, we were able to launch that whole person care plan. So in addition to covering those behavioral health services, we now also cover primary care and specialty care on the physical health side. We also cover some other benefits that are complimentary to that, which is the non emergency medical transportation. And we do that in partnership with a company called Better Care. We cover pharmacy benefits, durable medical equipment, so the medical equipment that our members need to take care of their physical health needs. And then long-term services and supports, which typically look like nursing care. Next slide. So one critical piece of serving our high needs population and offering the tailored plan coverage that we are now doing is tailored care medicine. So prior to operating as the tailored plan, when someone had a crisis or needed to transition to a different level of care. We would assign them to a care coordinator. They would look at service array and the needs of the person, they could connect them through a provider or a number of different providers depending on what their needs were. And then the provider would take over with their plan of care and monitoring how things are going. So the state created a tailored care management service that is offered both by Trillium and through a network of service providers. That monitors that member's plan of care throughout the year. In-person and electronic or phone contacts. So that we can better ensure that our members are connected and staying connected to the services that they need. As well as some of the other supports they need in their community that are certainly called social determinants of health. And that care team is really directed by the member. So it includes any physical or behavioral health expertise that's needed. It also can include other supports that the member identifies that are important to them. And then once that plan of care is created, it's regularly assessed throughout the year. Next slide. So there are a couple of service arrays that are only offered by us as a tailored plan as well that I thought would be helpful to make you all aware of. One that you're probably pretty familiar with or may be familiar with is the innovations waiver service. So that is an enhanced, a separate set of benefits that are heavily enhanced for individuals who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. And would meet the level of an inpatient setting but can live at home with supports. So those can look like long-term supports, day programs, group home settings, services like that. The TDI waiver services are, right now, they're still in pilot. In just one of the LEMCOs, the state does plan on expanding that throughout the state. So we are preparing to build our network to offer the TDI waiver services. Nineteen fifteen I services are home and community based services that are similar to some of the innovations waiver services. That benefit plan is a little smaller. But the focus is to offer some of those services to people who don't have to waiver yet because there is a significant waiting list for that set of benefits. And then we also manage those state funds. And this is one thing that I like to highlight for anyone who doesn't have insurance, has not applied for Medicaid. Or maybe isn't eligible and is underinsured. We cover those behavioral health services under our state funded plan. So I would encourage that we reach out to Trillium if that's needed. And so along with what we do versus what other health plans do, a lot of folks ask us how to become eligible for Trillium as a health plan versus a standard plan. So typically that is based on the level of service need that a person has. And so you'll see a couple of examples of how someone becomes eligible. So either they have a follow line diagnosis, they've been served at a state psychiatric hospital. Or a inpatient drug and alcohol treatment center. Or they've had some visits to an emergency department related to mental health emergency or crises. They can also, based on previous services that they've received, have been auto-enrolled into our plan by the state. During the process of tailored plan launch, members were encouraged to select their primary care doctor. As well as their care management providers. And so they will get auto-assigned to providers if they didn't select one right away. They can also change providers that they choose throughout the year. Typically with eligibility, if someone isn't involved with Trillium and feels like they are not getting the services that they need, their needs. They can either request that through the enrollment broker, which is an agency that the state contracts to handle Medicaid plan enrollment. Or they can reach out to their provider and their provider can assist them in moving over to receive additional benefits.
Is Healthy Blue, is that Blue Cross?
Healthy Blue is the Cross, yeah. It is the, it's the nonprofit. So just to kind of bring things closer to home. This is a look at the number of Medicaid recipients in Brunswick County. And then Trillium covers and who the standard plans cover. So there are a little over thirty-three thousand individuals in the county that receive Medicaid. About 30% of those are covered under the WILM in some way. So you'll see a little over ninety-nine hundred are overall numbers. Three thousand or so fall into that tailored plan category. So those are the folks that are getting that whole person care. And then a little under seven thousand are still receiving Medicaid direct, which is that system where we only cover the behavioral health services. They are carved out of Medicaid, either the standard plan or tailored plan. Because they are eligible for kind of a separate set of services typically. So it's mostly those folks who have Medicare and Medicaid because Medicare is covering the physical health side of things. And then there are a couple other populations that are carved out. And then your standard plans cover about 30% of your Medicaid numbers. So that's a little over five-three thousand folks in Brunswick County who are covered under a standard plan. The highest enrollment in terms of your standard plans are, is what help you with. So with any launch of a new plan, a significant change to the system, there are some adjustments. And there are some things that are gonna automatically happen as a result. So these are some of our initial findings after tailored plan launch. Our call volume went sky-high. It essentially almost doubled between June and then July of this year. We expect that. Folks have a lot of questions. It has slowly reduced down. So as of September, we had a little over twelve thousand calls. With that increase in call volume, typically folks were trying to find out who their care manager is. Trying to figure out how to schedule transportation appointments with Trillium. Those were some of the main questions and then also in calling with different providers.
Those call volume numbers, Brunswick County only or for your whole territory?
That's for the whole territory. No, we do not categorize call volume by county. One of the things that we anticipated happening and it didn't happen and it's something that we're still working on is transportation has been a bit of a struggle. There are two transportation vendors that the Medicaid health plans are producing. Most of us are using, but they're there. And I'm sure you can understand our members have special needs around the type of transportation they use. And what's gonna be a state transport to get them to them from their appointment. So we're working on those issues with our vendor, trying to make sure that our members' needs are met and they feel comfortable. With pharmacy, that is one of those services where we get billed in real time. So claims are delayed up to ninety days and so sometimes it's hard to sell. You know, claim volume, pharmacy is billed at any moment and so that is one of the numbers I'm able to provide. And through mid-October, we were, we paid out about eight to million dollars in pharmacy claims. So some of our kind of performance in terms of responding to members was impacted especially by that large call volume. So typically we were able to respond to calls. Ninety-nine percent of calls answered within thirty seconds. You'll see that drop down to a little bit under seventy-three percent. We just, you know, in all transparency, it started to answer all of those calls in a short period of time. We have changed some things with our call, our main call center line. So that specific questions around transportation, nurse line and those types of things can be directed right away to those special lines. So that our members who are asking about getting connected to a provider can be moved over to our agents who are answering those types of calls. We're hoping that that's going to help that call volume. And we know that it's gonna continue to drop, but it's just gonna take a while for folks to get used to all the, all the changes. The good news is that our members are getting services. And we are able to do those claims within thirty days. And that's happened at somewhere between ninety-nine and a hundred percent on all of our Medicaid and state plans. We also anticipated some issues with transportation and Trillium staff will proactive. In terms of the last week of, since last week of July, actually the last week of June. in terms of the last week of, since last week of July, actually the last week of June. When we had members who we knew were regularly attending appointments, at least once a week, they had transportation. And they hadn't scheduled that appointment yet. We had a team of staff make calls to nine hundred members to make sure that they were scheduled for their appointment that following week. Because we didn't want their services to be disrupted. So we've taken some of those proactive measures every year. So something that I always like to touch on, especially here in Brunswick County, because we are able to address social health needs in a unique way here, is the Health Opportunities Pilot. So that's a pilot program using Medicaid funds to support social health concerns for members. We know that eighty percent of health is related to safe housing, access to transportation outside of those medical appointments, food access, access to employment, and education, and personal safety. So our members being eligible to be part of that with the opportunities, pilot in February. And that has shown overall throughout the state the savings of about eighty dollars per person per month when someone is connected to those services and identified with Medicaid there. And then our Neighborhood Connections team, who has been doing that work for a long time without the necessary funding, continues to provide that support and funding that are covered by them. So we have other ways for folks to get involved with Trillium. Not only do we serve our members, but we serve the general public by providing education around how to handle mental health crisis. That's through CIT, through Mental Health First Aid. Question Persuade Referral is a suicide prevention education and community crisis intervention. We happen to have an event tomorrow at Brunswick Community College, which is a reentry simulation. So it helps those understanding the challenges that folks face as they are re-entering from jail and prison, and so we're happy to, the folks in the county to, to offer that event here, and we've been doing that throughout our commitment. And then we also have community newsletters that have other events that are important in terms of mental health assistance use and other needs that our members have. So all of that is available on our website. And then the last slide is just general contact information. Our member recipient service line continues to be our main point of contact. We do have a behavioral health crisis line that's available twenty-four-seven if someone is experiencing a behavioral health crisis. And if they are and they can't remember the behavioral health crisis line, ninety-eight is a great resource that has been in place for over a year, and the call volume just continues to go up as people reach out for suicide and behavioral health crisis support. And then we have some other. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Questions? Thank you so much.
No questions, just thank you for what you do, and I'll put in a plug for the mental health first aid training. I did that about a year ago and learned far more than I ever imagined that I would. I would highly recommend everyone take that.
Are you aware about the North Carolina Medicaid advisory committee that they're trying to create?
That, information about that just came across my desk, but I don't have a lot of information around it, but I haven't heard about that. So we're, we're still trying to figure out how to, how to assist any folks involved in that.
Okay.
Well, thank you for all you do, and you're everywhere. I mean, every time something goes off, when you're with the NCACC or something, what's going on? I, my apology, I'm not going to be able to make it tomorrow. I'm going to be at another conference and I have to be there, but anyway, but thank you for all you do. Really do appreciate it.
Thank you for trying to be in all the places that, that you can.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next up, cooperative extension?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Amy Heedle. I am your incoming senate director with the Department of Parks and Recreation, you know, for youth development. Hi, well, here's a, for those few Brunswick youth council, the county managers office came to extension and some of our departments with interest in youth council, and this was a great idea. And we feel that extension, that cooperative extension of four H might be a good house for this type of youth council. Just a little bit of information about what the youth council is. The benefits of the youth council are kind of twofold. Firstly, the benefits would be to the members themselves. These youth councils would be a voice for the youth in this county. So they would be that direct community sense of youth to bring forward their concerns, their ideas, and be able to act and present to years. So, you know, you as a commissioner and the county manager's office would be able to hear what the youth need and other concerns are. Like the benefits to the youth themselves would be really quite a lot. Really this would provide youth with opportunities to engage in our local government and be able to develop strong citizenship and leadership skills, which is really a big component of four H, that leadership, that citizenship. And so those youth councils will really be involved with our community planning, events, community service projects, and the like. There are more examples of youth councils within North Carolina. A lot of them look a little different, sometimes they're town-based youth councils, sometimes they're out of the city. There are several examples where there is collaboration between four H and youth councils. This is an example from Littleton County, their youth council. So we might have mentioned, uh, youth councils are, they are organized by the North Carolina Department of Administration. They've been around throughout the country, and they are administered through the state through the council. So we're proposing a four H youth council, a four H youth council. If you're not familiar with four H, four H is the largest youth development program in the state. It's housed through our land-grant universities, so here in North Carolina, and the state university, and the agency state universities. And they really focus on leadership skills, stand and advocate, help to lead, and citizenship. So this really fits very well with, youth councils fit very well with their mission of four H. We have a really robust four H program here in Brunswick County. So what we're proposing is kind of modifying something that we already have. So this is what we're trying to add, we're counting that with the office, these are things that we already have. A program is called Team Leadership Training. It's called the FLEP Program. And this is really a supportive, and I think it's really a robust program that, you know, a lot of things put in place in the pandemic. They're doing a wonderful job of getting this FLEP program going again. It really has a lot of the same goals that the youth council. So we're proposing a modified program. We will reach out to high schools, middle schools, homeschoolers, age-based organizations, refer applications to this youth council. And, you know, this is a proposed timeline. We could potentially begin accepting applications in January. That would be an additional timeline. The four H works on how long the year is scheduled, that would work within that longer year. The work, the difference would be heard both at the four H club and with the North Carolina Department of Administration that works that actively to get out there. That's a youth council. So what we're asking from Brunswick County would be programming and mentorship. So from youth council commissioners, we would ask that, you know, you would need the bits of youth council. They would come to meetings, that you would provide mentorship to them. I know that you've had several of our warriors here come present to you, and they get so much out of that connection with our local county government. We would also ask the same from our county commissioner or county manager's office, county clerk. And then we would ask for programming and mentorship from some of our county departments as well. So maybe that looks like, you know, looking at public health, you know, public human services standpoint, or, you know, learn about finance, and sort of need to young people to learn about careers and, you know, global development as well. We already have really strong, there's a seminar, a library, a park. Again, this would be both a youth council and a four H club, so they would participate in a lot of things that our warriors already do. Like our state presentation competitions, which if you have ever seen, I run a third year of health, it's incredible to see these young people getting up and presenting. A lot of people, their fear is public speaking. And if you've ever seen a six-year-old presenting to you about something they're passionate about, it's incredible. And it goes all the way from a little, a young person, you know, a very, a very simple talk to a seventeen-year-old who are really, what it's easy to, you know, to explain very complicated topics. It's really an incredible experience for young persons. We also do things like our record books, which is going through the process of going through projects and things we did. Get that accomplished as well. There are other events like four H Congress. And then this youth council will really focus on community service front instead of just wanting to make it so. So we don't, we would not need any additional funding at this time, you know, very generous budget with four H. And this would be, because we'd be modifying an army spending program, we would not need any additional funding. Pretty, so with that, I'll just end with, you know, the question. But I just want to say thank you for the mentors ongoing support for Quonton St. and our partners. And then for the place as well, and I'm not going to, but this is really great, it's our, just the name, our inaugural four H dairy path project. So these are young people who've gone through the beach project, learning how to handle, and manage. They, these are paths, so they're having a program now. But they're learning about milk products, and water within, and some happy days for you. They're wonderful youth, and they're, they're great things. So that all, if you have any questions about creating youth councils.
I would want to. I, I have a grandson who's going to be nine the end of this week, and a granddaughter who's six and a half. You would said, and this goes from what eight, what's the earliest stage? Because I heard you talking about a six-year-old all the way through high school.
Five. So five to seven-year-olds are going to be our flavor boats. And they get to, not compete, but participate in a lot of the same four H activities as everyone else does. They just don't keep the judges. So they get to come in during this time and get the experience. And get started early and figure it out, and when I have some flavor boats that are back to bed and they're doing the theory project, and we're going to show Saturday, and so they don't get to compete, but they still get to show. And they go through the judging, but they get completion oriented, and then next year, the ones who age out of flavor boats, they improve their mind. What are eight, eight, or three, will get scared for something. So then getting this start from back to studying, getting some idea of kind of what to do when they start on it, and then. So they try to, with regards to the youth council, we have determined what age groups we want to use to accomplish. And that's the second, and it would make sense for all of these middle schools or high schools to be responsible. But the four H is five days.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
No questions, just a couple of comments. I'm a hundred percent supportive of this idea, and I know I've seen four H, and we've all seen the four H youth that have come here. One in particular, Sydney Blair, I don't know if you guys know her, but she is, and we're just wondering whose district she's going to move back into and run against is what we're kind of wondering.
She's the sort of four H program who's got in going down.
Really?
Where is that? What?
Chawan.
Chawan. Is it in North Carolina? It's in North Carolina, probably, Chawan. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yes, those are here.
So the two of you that come up in two years are safe for now.
Pretty bad, pretty bad that the Yankee had to tell you, they didn't even act down.
That's probably because you've been corrected on that. But, and I think four H is a great vehicle. I, I would encourage you, and you may have mentioned this, to engage groups like the Boys and Girls Clubs and get them plugged in. One agency that just fell throughout that will probably be a huge help is our Sheriff's Office. They have so many programs. I would certainly put them on your list of groups to engage in. And they, they would probably be extremely excited about it, but I don't know if we need to take any action tonight or what the plan is for that. I'll defer to staff on whether or not we need to do anything tonight on this.
Does, doesn't require a motion. You know, the way, I have to tell you, the way this, the way I became aware of this was starting in June and then in August by a gentleman by the name of Mr. Connor Wilkinson. Are y'all familiar with him? Yeah, he was the one that was impetus behind it, and he in fact was the Senate page as well as a governor's page this past year. And he said, there's only fifteen youth councils in the state. And he said, and I, and I quote, he said, he said, "I was contacting you today to ask if Brunswick County Board of Commissioners may be interested in creating youth councils in Brunswick County, and if any of the commissioners may be interested in serving as the advisor to this council, the main goal of a youth council would be to promote youth involvement in governmental affairs and increase civic literacy and participation in our county. This council will also organize and assist in community service efforts and initiatives throughout the county." And if you'd like any of additional information regarding youth council, you can reach me at the same email. That's, that's how this thing got going, and I bug Steve to death about it, and so I appreciate y'all picking it up. I just want to make sure he's engaged. He's a junior with. I think you have, yeah, so.
Can we close nominations now?
Well, he hasn't voted on it. So anyway, but yeah, I mean, I think Mr. Wilkinson, there's a, at West Brunswick, and I think he'd be an outstanding asset to the guys, so.
We will definitely read that. Yeah, I can say, my daughters, I will, you know, just about, one in college, one that graduated, all have been Team Leaders Club and community member, and what they get out of the community, that they get with, you know, the opportunity they get to present, to be leaders. You really are creating the leaders.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Thank you, ma'am.
I guess the question would be, I noticed you said schools. Did that include the charter schools?
Yes, of course, yeah. And that would be a big game on this, that we would want to get as broad as we can, that you could then, you know, on board charter schools.
Very good. Well, I think, I think you've got our blessing. So we're, we look forward to, you know, as you, as you get closer, moving along, we'd love to hear an update from you. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate you. All right. Next up is engineering. We're going to hear about potential changes to the Brunswick County Stormwater Ordinance. Welcome.
Amy?
Virginia, Deputy Engineering Director. At the October twenty-first meeting, the board provides their presentation on potential updates to those stormwater ordinance manual in response to the severe flooding impacts that occurred from a potential tropical cycle made. As you know, the Brooklyn High Stormwater Ordinance, the manual has been in place since two thousand and two. An update to the stormwater ordinance was completed in two thousand and sixteen, and we have been working on an update for stormwater, stormwater ready currently. The main goals of this ordinance manual are to minimize the public's risk to their injury and death and limit the risks that private and public property will cause by stormwater runoff within the county's jurisdiction. Also maintain and increase the monitoring levels on all the screens and waterways contained in the county's jurisdiction. To provide for the public's health state to be well-bear by protecting the water quality and the county's servers, eduterrys, and other water bodies and wetlands. And to ensure the county combines all applicable federal and state regulations. The date has made it clear that they do not have statutory authority to regulate or remedy flooding issues. Their law requirements are involved on the county's. We have identified the riparian buffer section of the stormwater manual impacting potential ground base that could reduce flooding impacts of severe storm event. A riparian buffer is the area of the stream throughout the vegetation that is based on natural drainage ways that are not un-stirred. The county currently requires thirty-foot riparian buffer around intermitents, burning streams, pond, lake, and other water bodies in the county. Do not require riparian buffers around weather. So, um, potential updates to these requirements will include increasing the current riparian buffer width required from during the fifty weeks. This is currently permitted in the state already, required if you defeat a setback, so this point will be changed. Updating the uses, allow the riparian buffer, currently stormwater and full measures are allowed in the buffer. Requiring these measures to be outside the buffer will help to maintain his negative the natural drainage way. Well, why I'm bothering you for. Adding a minimum rubber required around wetlands would be a problem. Wetlands are generally required to develop it and minimal impacts are permitted such as river prompting. Adding a buffer to the wetlands that are not disturbed on the other sides would add another layer of protection for wetlands and maintaining the natural. And finally, requiring all stormwater control measures to be built outside the eighty-year zone on the hundred-year storm. This would ensure that the natural function of the floodplain would remain intact in addition to any storms created in the stormwater control measures. And that may require an update to the floodplain.
They're, they're actually doing that, I understand, right now on the playing board. That's what he told us.
The other section of the stormwater manual that could be updated is the previous starting requirements. Providing the previous rated water being developed area is one of the key factors in managing the impact of new development on the property of adjacent and downstream landowners and on local streams and other water bodies. Stormwater ordinance and manual originally required is to control one-year twenty-four-hour storm to ten-year twenty-four-hour storm. Commissioners have since approved the addition of the twenty-five-year storm to be in line with Polish mountain endurance standards. And we have been enforcing that. The goal is there to be no net increases in stormwater runoff, leaving aside from pre-development. As discussed in the previous meeting, one potential update to stormwater ordinance and manual is to control post-development conditions up to the hundred-year twenty-four-hour storm and to potentially look at increasing the design storm of stormwater, the design storm of stormwater conveyance. The county's stormwater ordinance standard is not currently called out with the design storm used for stormwater conveyance systems. We would have to update that in our, in our industry standard is to use a ten-year storm event as the primary. Possible concerns of increasing to the hundred-year windstorm that for control and work of man. The footprint of stormwater control measure would increase. This will have an impact on the available land. It would especially be more strict upon smaller sites or annual development.
I ask one question, Bridget, control versus conveyance? I'm guessing control is the retention upon conveyance is how it gets there? Okay, just making sure I understood the terms.
Stormwater control measures will help mitigate flooding downstream in large storm events, especially if they were located outside of the floodplain. The likelihood of improving the flooding situation is a greater events that occur during TTPA or occurrence reports are really unrealistic. We are not aware of any restrictions in the state requiring a hundred-year feature storm control or using the hundred-year design storm for stormwater conveyance systems. We feel that more information needs to be analyzed to determine the feasibility and the cost versus whether that would, they would occur. And I put together a few slides. This is actually a current site of the Brunswick County. They showed what it was before development and that and the floodplain had the hundred-year and five-hundred-year floodplain on it. And the red is the floodplain. So it's obviously very close to. And this is US TOPO, which shows the branch that runs on the bottom, southern part of the property. And they're tied into the. So this project actually has basically implemented all of the potential requirements that we were looking at maybe doing. And they did it because they were, we were aware of downstream flooding issues in this area. So as you can see, the stormwater ponds are located outside of the different setback. They're looked at, they're located outside of all floodplains. A five, a one-hundred-year and a five-hundred-year. And those ponds are also designed to control the hundred-year storm event. Now, this being a bigger site, you know, they were able to do it. But like again, a smaller site might be more good.
When you, when you say smaller site, how many homes are you talking about?
Well, not even small, that, well, just even on residential projects.
Uh, uh, okay, great. How many acres then?
I mean, a lot of these sites are, you know, a couple of acres.
I know.
Yeah, so, so to have to put in what would be needed to control for the hundred-year storm that were fired in that state.
And then, and you know, people would sit here and say, well, that's fine. But what about what we had, you know, a month or so back, you know, in September? And we said, well, that's a tropical system. That, that's a twenty-inch, I don't even know what that would equate to, and the same thing in the mountains. So you, you, I mean, you can have thirty inches of rain, haven't you even forecasted or something like that? I mean, you can. But you can do what is a reasonable perspective. And I think we have a very stringent perspective regarding what is the best we can do with that, so.
So I just wanted to talk a little bit about our program to, you know, as far as maintaining stormwater control measures. Being active in reducing flooding, they must be actively maintained. This stormwater ordinance already includes the annual inspection program where staff annually expects stormwater control measures that are permitted throughout the county. The county currently expects over five hundred stormwater control measures and puts out between three and four hundred inspection letters a year. The stormwater control measures inspected include wet retention bases, dry retention ponds, stormwater wetlands, infiltrant locations, treatment wells, et cetera. Property owners and our homeowners association and our residents development are sent letters informing them of required maintenance to be completed to ensure the stormwater control measures continue to function per defined.
So are they, are they following that when they get the letters and stuff?
I'm a bit hesitant on, you know, we always have a knowledge where we have to go back and try to.
For the ones that are repeat non-compliers, are there any stepped up charges beyond the just us going in and doing it? Charging them to do it or any, any teeth in those HOAs or whoever who keep continually not doing their part on this?
There, there's teeth in the ordinance. I'd say we haven't used it a lot. I mean, there are pockets of different names. And there's a part that went into the county to come in and maintain something and charge them. We never use that. And the current policy of stormwater ordinance requires the individual property owner maintain all streams, creeks, that you well-sized, corporate footer that are located on by the property. The county, the county handling franchise maintenance on by the property on a complaint basis. If we get a complaint that someone still did it, did it, or, you know, that the ditches are wrong. We, we will go out and do an inspection. And if it's determined that maintenance is required, then we will send a letter to the property owner telling them that they need to maintain the, the ditch or whatever. The county is not currently complying with that, it's a great thing.
What, uh, question here? Do we ever tell the state of North Carolina? Because there are situations, I would say that, that the ditches or the pipes need to be cleaned out by the state.
Well, I, well, we will contact DOT if we go across something like that and let them know. And then they will make obvious security in their life way or under their roots.
But, yeah, I understand.
Their life way, they sit there right back.
But I, I've, I've done that several times this quarter. I, I've contacted, in September, I had, I think, three instances where they were out there even the day after the tropical, potential tropical cyclone eight. They were out there the next day working on ditches and where we had a complaint. So I found them to be very responsive whenever we needed them to clean out a pipe or a ditch. So.
What did you call these buffers? I, the word you used there. Okay, definition, please.
It was, I mean, as a buffer, it's just basically an unstirred buffer.
But only for wetlands?
No, it's a.
That's a street buffer as well? I've never heard that term used.
Oh, yeah, it's definitely just one word. Basically, it's an unstirred, I mean, unstirred buffer, it's thirty feet.
So that would be along the roadway.
No, it's along any, um, regional stream or creek. And actually, it has to be identified in the USGS TOPO or these Brunswick County soil map. If, if the creekers, they like the big dress interview previously. This spring would require a thirty-foot buffer.
Okay.
Shows up on the GS, USGS TOPO.
Okay.
This is a law shall not alter a be that the flow of the nation's great, great swell or bit. Great defense must be maintained according to instructions. Obviously, US is a majority of the digits that are out there in the county, though not great in the future on them, but what it do, provide them to stay clear. The county does not control stormwater, and it is not allowed in the US government. And that concludes the second part of the presentation. So I'm glad to answer your questions. We will be on an average.
All right, any further here?
I, I have some things I'm a little confused on. Currently, we use a twenty-five-year uh, storm event, right? I have no problem with going to a hundred. I think some of the larger developers might. They don't really care. Okay, but like the national. But I don't think most local developers will have a problem with going to Hundred Year Storm Event, the stormwater. I, when I spoke to the consultants that are going over our UDO now, I gave them a list of things, but I have it right here of what I had asked for. And like, you said, we are already at thirty-foot buffers? I thought we were at twenty-foot buffers right now, currently.
Probably talking about buffers in the plant, the media and during the plant, that's totally different than our buffers.
Okay, then I am confused. Because I had asked that they get increased from twenty to thirty-foot buffers. My problem is when you're talking lot sizes with some of these buffers. Smaller, like, there's got to be a minimum before this goes in. I mean, somebody's got a, a twenty-acre piece of land and they want to develop all, all of these buffers, there's nothing left to develop. So I, I think we got to be cautious. Okay, uh, I, I'm all about stormwater control. I am. I, I think that's the way we have to go. I, I think I, I don't have a problem making it a requirement that all pods provide a hundred, a hundred pre-post stormwater treatment. I, I have no problem with that. I just think we got to be careful with these smaller lot sizes of what we ask for. You got, you got to be careful. I think, well, planning, I, I talked to our plant people, he said that they're already doing a hundred-year already. Yeah, most of the locals are already doing it. No, I'm saying they don't pass, they won't pass unless it's got the hundred-year. Yeah, yeah. So.
Your head.
Yeah, I, I think you're kind of getting planning and stormwater.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I am.
It needs to be, it's two separate items. So forget planning right now, this is stormwater drain runoff.
But if you make all of these changes, it affects all the planning.
Not necessarily.
How does it not?
Because of the buffer.
Well, because look, I mean, one may be, I mean, our buffer is around the creeks, the buffer. A lot of times those areas are, these are open space for planning purposes. So they might dive them in, give you those areas. I mean, it won't affect theirs that much.
This, I wrote down the bullets of the things that possibly to consider. I want to make sure I got it right. One would be changes to the riparian buffers, et cetera. And I wrote separately, control standard versus conveyor standard. Are they the same standard or would you have one standard for the ponds and one for the conveyance to get it to the ponds?
Okay, there is.
Okay. And that's what I've had, I've talked with some people who design these things for a living, who said that they thought that the higher standard was probably more important and also more feasible on the control side, the palm side, on the conveyor. So that's one piece of feedback I received. I think enforcement of the maintenance and making sure we probably step that up with people that are supposed to be maintaining their stormwater systems. And exception for smaller tracks, if we do make some changes, because if somebody's got five acres, that's different than somebody who's developing a thousand acres. That's farmer trying to sell three lots or something. And I guess we're going to learn more about the stormwater utility idea in just a minute here. So I'm not asking any more about that because you're probably getting ready to confuse me even more.
I have one more question, unless you got. Uh, I noticed that your potential changes, you have require stormwater control managers to build, to be built outside of the A and E flood zone, the hundred-year. Explain that a little bit to me.
Well, currently, I mean, the floodplain organs and stormwater allow them to put their stormwater ponds in the flood, the eighty flood zones on. So they're allowed to do it, which, I mean, you know, if, if they're outside of the flood zone, then you're, you keep the flood zone intact to do its job, what it's supposed to do. And then you put, you know, you put the pond and then, you know, you're, you're using, you're taking that volume that was already in the floodplain to use it to fill it up.
So with your, with these potential changes, then you're saying that we, we should move forward with these changes? Okay.
And make sure that I just heard that correctly. Here, the, the proposal is, is to move the stormwater ponds outside of the flood.
Wetland.
Wetland.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Ready to.
Chairman, I'd like to leave one comment before we, we move on. Literally some of the top stormwater management experts in the country, um, faculty at SC State and are affiliated with Cooperative Extension, I heard you say that, but they're there. And we certainly can reach out to them to, to get some technical assistance as, as we move forward through this process. We, we, we actually worked with Bill one, fifteen or sixteen years ago when we did the Lockland Poll and Roundtable. So he, he knows us. But there are other folks that are very, very well-versed in stormwater management. And one reason that you might want to consider doing something that maybe nobody else in North Carolina has is because nobody else in North Carolina is the fastest-growing county in the state in a flood program here.
True. True.
I, I met with a gentleman about a week ago who lives in Brunswick County and is retired. I think he worked for SC State at some point developing these. I will pass his name along to you guys as well, because he had lots of opinions and was willing to share them.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Uh, my name is Richard Christensen. I work with a bridge and a stormwater engineer for the county. Continuing Bridget's stormwater presentation, I will be providing a brief introduction to hopefully a better understanding of stormwater utilities. At the October point report, the commissioner, the board also requested more information in regards to the possible creation of a stormwater utility. So what exactly is a stormwater utility? It's a legal entity that provides services to property owners by collecting, conveying, and managing their stormwater well. It is similar to a water service utility where it provides inventive, entering revenue for stormwater management activities. It's a fee-for-service branch. Utility also maintains the infrastructure and management systems that deliver these, these services. Additional activities that can be part of the utility include administration, planning, engineering, regulation, permitting, maintenance operations, and capital increases. Revenue is generated by stormwater utility fees, which is a dedicated funding source for the activities just mentioned. Many utility's funded programs, the property taxes, the taxes determined based on the property's value. Uh, many utility, utility sponsored programs for the property taxes, uh, with the taxes determined based on the property's value. Uh, however, programs are increasingly being funded, uh, with fees that are based on how much incurious service a property has. Uh, for example, a non-residential or commercial property or, uh, would typically pay a higher fee than a residential property. Uh, this method has shown to be a more equitable way to determine the fee. Uh, there are approximately one hundred stormwater utilities in the state of North Carolina. Ninety-five percent are in municipalities.
Are there any, any in Brunswick County, any of the towns?
Uh, sure. In, uh, Oakdale, maybe, yeah, I mean, Calalela, maybe, um.
Yeah, I was thinking Leland, but I'm not sure.
Like I said, ninety-five percent of this power is rated, mainly five percent for counties. Um, of the counties' stormwater utilities, most are in central part of the state, uh, in close proximity to highly urbanized areas, such as Wake County. Uh, you have a county that has a stormwater utility, would be considered an outlier to its coastal location.
What is a municipal, municipal separate stormwater sewer system permit? That second bullet, what is an MS four permit?
Um, an MS four is a conveyance or a system of conveyances that is owned by a state, a city, a town, a village, or other public entity that discharges water to the US. Um, it is designed to, uh, designed to use to collect or convey stormwater through storm, uh, storming system pipes, called up to give you all that, that's four, um. Metro County, G L M S four permit in the county in state. Uh, the Brooklyn County, Oregon, Haverhill, Oklahoma, operate in its four. Uh, this slide, the table lists, uh, several local counties that have a stormwater utility. Uh, a lot of lists, the populations, the land areas, and dates the utilities were established. You can see that other than Charlotte, Beckham, there are stormwater utility related with me. North Carolina has plenty of coastal counties, New York County is the only coastal county for this. Uh, here we, we provide more information about the Haverhill County's, uh, stormwater utility. Uh, it's programmed again in Compton. Uh, the program helps to ensure that the team of team, of the stormwater ma, uh, management systems through unincorporated areas of the public county. But not through the city willings and or even the beach towns. The service does not have a road grade, which will then see the take, uh, N C D O T maintaining the rest of it. Uh, the amount of county does not maintain the stormwatering systems that direct wellout to a county permitted of stormwater control. The Haverhill County only maintains infrastructure and they define that public drains. You have a county only made, uh, excuse me, the new services offered to all properties in the unincorporated areas regardless of whether a pipe or the drainage ditch exists on the water.
I can interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
So, New Hanover County, the service does not include the city of Wilmington or the county's beach towns. Correct. So what's included? Castle Hain, because that's about all that's left?
Do you think it's unincorporated?
That must be about seven square blocks.
There's, there's the part just before you get to Carolina Beach, what's it called? Okay. They were fighting with me, but, uh, against forest damage stations, so yes.
But, uh, residential properties are charged in flat rate fee per month. Non-residential, developed properties pay a fee based on the amount of incurious service. Undeveloped properties are not charged. Property owners that fall within the boundary and the county issue permitted system receiving discount because they are mitigating peak flows from their sites. Uh, this slide, uh, is, you know, the county's drainage maintenance process. Uh, as concerned and issues come in from citizens around the county, a vehicle on form or a phone call, uh, the county's end government inspector need with the property owner to, to discuss the concern and investigate the issue. Uh, from there, the county populates a list of projects and prioritize. Uh, however, each project is prioritized depending on type of access involved, the severity, the problem, the number of homes impacted, and of other agencies such as N C B or T, US Army Corps of Engineers in years, and North Carolina Department of Quality and Product. Once a project is selected and scheduled to begin, property owners can expect to see the equipment show up on site. Uh, but before the county comes to that area, property owners have to notify. Uh, if drains exist on the project site, uh, they utilize door hangers. They're notified that work will be in the area in so long time. Uh, if these are not, then probably we will see the letter given by mail or hand delivery that contains a right of entry agreement that must be fully, uh, executed before it commence. Uh, the agreement, how wonderful work that will take place and how the property will be restored once the work is completed. How is their utility developed? Uh, the county contracted a firm to perform rate studies and work through various details associated with the creation of the stormwater utility. The utility was developed from the formula based on anticipated level of service and what they believed it would take to deliver that level of service. It was not developed from a notice of projects and estimates. It was done in two phases with multiple public involvement opportunities. The process began in twenty seventeen and the board voted to move forward with the creation of the utility in twenty nineteen. Uh, during fiscal year twenty twenty, work was conducted solely by contractors, completing the degree, the degree removal from Hurricane Florence. Uh, property owners will not charge for the fee until twenty twenty-two. And in twenty twenty-one, kind of staffs and, and equipment was banned. Fifteen full-time positions dedicated solely to the utility were created, from engineers to crew members. They also continue to contract outwork with private consultants and contractors to support their efforts. Financing was also required upfront and supplying the utility with the necessary equipment, ranging from personal protective equipment, to small hands tools, to vehicles and heavy equipment. Uh, if we use New Hanover County's stormwater utility as a template to create your utility for one county, there are several factors to consider. One, New Hanover County has roughly one point five times the population of North Carolina.
Well, now, but we also have to take into the fact that, uh, the whole county is, is mostly city.
Correct.
So what is the percentage of population for the area that they are doing this utility?
I would like to see that, if we could get it, and also, I know we're not gonna have it tonight, and also a map of what's covered, and that would be helpful, too.
Correct. I need that for you.
Cause in essence, what you're saying is that they have a very small, I mean, the population is great. They have a very small amount of their population's actually being served by this utility.
And they had to hire fifteen staff members to do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
From Monkey Junction.
Yeah.
We, continue going there. Having a smaller population of any of the stormwater utility congratulating the hard teams. That's the question, you know, how many people are paying into this on a monthly basis?
At first, it'd probably be a lot. At first, it might be a lot.
Yeah, population for, uh, uh, cameras, uh, just a good revenue. They're not all land area, from the county, I live in three towns, the land area.
Yeah, but again, that, that has no bearing on this, because.
Well, not that, as far as staffing and equipment needs, you know, whatever, kind of the character and it has to their size. Increase.
Okay.
To come on.
Okay, you're talking about that, a good aspect, okay, okay, yeah, I get that.
Exactly. Um, another angle is the county that need to procure facilities uh, to house the employees and, and the equipment. Uh, as we've already mentioned earlier, New Hanover County, Ember of the county, they, they don't own or maintain roads. They, they either, they're either stay maintained for private, uh, maintaining the drainage systems in, and under private roads presents some, some big challenges. Um, and finally, because unincorporated, so the county can improve, there aren't any, any drainage events on low properties, access is more likely, they have to be granted through the right of entry agreements. Uh, access to those areas required, they, they're difficult for the tanks. That, uh, great presentation.
All right, other thoughts?
Just to follow up on the things Commissioner Sykes was saying, that's, I'm certainly not ready to, to commit to the idea of a utility at this point, I think it's a lot to. The things I would want to know is for Brunswick County versus New Hanover County, what, how many square miles would actually be subject to the utility? Their square miles that are in their stormwater utility, and how many of ours are unincorporated? Um, how many people live in their covered area? How many people are in ours? And then the cost per capita would be something to know. One thing, you know, they have one huge town and a few little ones, we have nineteen towns, so that's another animal. If we were to ever to decide to pursue this, I would want to look at some option where our towns could opt in so that we could have a, if we were gonna do it, see if we could have a true county-wide stormwater utility where the town, towns opt into it, because it makes no sense to have it stop here, start here, stop here, start here. Um, and, you know, we also have, you know, about seventy-six percent of our county's acreages in timber, so that's something to consider, that's certainly not really an issue over there, and, and do still have a few farmers, so that's, we have lots of things to consider. You know, that's, uh, I had no idea how this would work, and I'm still, think the devil's in the details, there are a lot of details on everything we've heard that we still need to think about.
And, yeah, so, and here's the, yeah, why are you pointing even to consider?
Uh, would, um, these potential changes in the buff, the, the requirements here in the stormwater, would that, um, take care of some of the issues? That you wouldn't have to have a utility?
Well, I mean, as I mentioned earlier, as far as the maintenance requirements, we already have, you know, the uh, city private property, they need to make us, and then doing the able infections, those are the more important things to make sure that the stormwater systems and stormwater control centers are maintained. So I feel like we're doing it to a, a point, you know, I mean, the stormwater utility just takes it to a whole other level.
Okay.
Hmm.
Yeah, stormwater utility basically handle, like a subdivision for that, they have stormwater convenience system that transfer for the, you know. That area is not included, or listen, that, that county does not maintain that stormwater convenience over time, that's because of the state's law, early in the county permit, that'll fall back to the utility and. The outfall point that stormwater control, in, in this case, West Cape, is in Pendleton, that outfall to where it enters creeks, streams, you know, coastal. That's where, again, it can, but it's very efficient, because if the downstream sections don't work, then those.
Right, right. Well, and we got some, uh, developments that have no HOA.
Off the top of your head, how many HOAs do we have that have their own stormwater permitting? In the county? Okay, I mean, are we looking at a lot? Yeah, probably all of them.
Since two thousand and eighteen, no, since two thousand and.
Okay, since two thousand and two, okay.
And that's, and unincorporated, the towns are separate from that, correct?
Except for five.
Okay. Which five are those?
Bellville, uh, Moore's, Delight, Bolivia, Sunset Beach, and San Diego.
Okay.
That's a lot.
Hypothetically, if we did do the stormwater utility, would we be basically opening up water to cl, to get it to a clogged-up DOT ditch?
Yeah, anytime, you know, the water's getting somewhere faster, and if the, anything's undersized, it's, you're still gonna have an issue somewhere down throughout.
And, fir, first off, thank y'all for coming back and, and doing this, I know staff's recommendations in it to get y'all come, come and focus on this for our October meeting, but you know, can you, uh, if you had a shortlist something, if you had to say, hey, what, what can make a difference if we started tomorrow? What would, what would be the one thing that, or the shortlist of things that you would actually focus on?
Probably land, ground issues, they have these storms, you see where the, where water is coming in.
Hmm.
That's, that's the first point to try to figure out what's causing that, if it's DOT, uh, you know, if there be a number of things, but I mean, maintenance is such a huge.
Uh huh.
Over there, I mean, if you're not maintaining your advances, I mean, you're just asking for your old. And that's what we try to do with our annual inspections and try to get these HOAs program to involve, to understand that, that it's imperative that they maintain their facilities.
Okay, and, and know that we, I know that we have a meeting, uh, coming up with, uh, with DOT uh, to actually, uh, discuss some of their drainage. Um, do you have any ongoing issues with drainings, drainage that you've identified that go to DOT? Specific sites?
I do.
Yeah, and I'd say, send that list to.
Yeah.
To Steve, um, are, are you guys included in that meeting? I think y'all were, uh, there.
Okay, can you bring it to the meeting?
Me, me and David has an issue that doesn't drain down the straight road, it comes to my house.
Any issues anybody knows about, I guess, send, send, maybe send them to, to you, Bridget, so that you can bring one list rather than us having ten lists.
Yeah.
I, I know, I live in Boiling Spring Lakes. And I have a city-owned conveyance pipe that goes to the pond at the back of my property. I moved there in September of oh-five. I've had eight work orders over that time, asking them to basically rotor, router that pipe, because nothing goes down, it's blocked. That pipe's been there for decades, and nobody has ever touched it. So when the storm ditches on my block, and I, there's only five houses on my block, um, the water sits in the ditches and has nowhere to go. I have literally taken videos and photos and brought it to City Hall and said, oh, we had no idea. Uh, there's been six other work orders put in for this, but you had no idea? And I just did it, P T C eight. That water sat in those storm ditches in front of everybody's house for about nine days before it started to recede. Cause they never cleaned it. And you just said that Boiling Spring Lakes has a stormwater ordinance like that to take care of this?
Yeah, but yeah, they're even, Boiling Spring Lakes too. They basically call of our ordinance, uh, we use local permits for them, they felt it in uh, Boiling Spring Lakes, but they are ultimately responsible for the maintenance of their streets.
Which they do not do.
Do we inspect them like we would an HOA?
If there, if there's a, count them, let it come as we. Or find it, even.
Our bigger problem, uh, on, for my own edification, uh, I, the, the way I'm hearing this, our problem isn't so much ponds, it's conveyance. The ponds fill, but the water's just not going out fast enough to go someplace else. Is, is that kinda hit in a nutshell?
Well, they do, yeah, black penis and.
Mm-hmm.
Basically, this is about telling.
I mean, Frank and I are on the Rural Planning Organization, and we set the legislative goal up that DOT really needs to start cleaning out their stuff.
Yeah, um, I, up in Northwest where my dad lives, I mean, the water flows through his yard and gets into the big ditch, and it's a DOT ditch, and it just stops.
Yeah.
And it sits there, like, I mean, I've seen fish in that ditch.
It, it's crazy.
Pretty good sized one, because the water was there for so long.
You know, it, it does amaze me, you know, for the past ten years, we've been talking about the Kaka and all the issues associated with the Kaka, and then we have a storm that rolls in that, uh, that really impacts a large part of the county, with the exception of the Kaka. And so, you know, it's, uh, it's something that needs to, it is something that needs to be addressed, and, uh, and I think, I think if we have that list as we, as we go and we meet with DOT, I think that's a good start. Um, you know, and then maybe we can come back and look at some of your other, uh, recommendations that, that you discussed, uh, to, to kinda see how we might be able to implement those once we, it, it just seems like the maintenance issue seems to be the number one goal here. Uh, that would remedy a lot of the issues that we were subject to from the, uh, the storm, so.
But there's another thing, too, that may need to be addressed with the General Assembly, and I've had this.
And I've had this question about some of the drainage with DOT in prior years. And I claimed that they weren't cleaning the ditches. Now, this is going back a number of years. And they said, we are. And I said, no, you're not. And they said, yes, we are. And I said, no, you're not. And so we went back and forth on it and they said, well, we clean half of the ditch. The other half we don't. I said, why not? And they said, you have to have an environmental impact statement we had to do it. Because the idea is environmentally, they want to slow water down. So it doesn't go into the estuaries and to other areas like that, so. That's what they told me, is the idea is the vegetation, that's what slows down passage of water. So the toxins will run off or whatever is in that water doesn't quickly go into other areas. And that's what they told me.
Well, we're fine with it slowing down. We just don't want it stopped.
Well, yeah, but the whole point being is that it's slowing down to the point that it floods like what you're talking about.
It stops.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't have the flow to be able to take care of the demand. I don't know if there's anything to that. That's what they told me.
Yeah, I guess we'll find out in another couple of weeks, so. Looking forward to it. Any other?
That's a lot to think about. I think I've got a headache after all that. But thank you. Thank you for the work.
Appreciate it.
It was very informative.
All right, so we're moving along, so we're gonna hear from Utilities now. The NC one Water Disaster Preparedness Award. Hey, all right, how about y'all?
Nice when people break the awards, not invoices.
Really?
Yeah, nothing but good news tonight from Utilities. But you're leaving, um, chairman members on the board. And so, um, the board of commissioners had a couple of goals, um, uh, this past year, one is to support advancement and continuous improvement of health, safety and preparedness efforts in our county. And to continue to prepare and respond timely and effectively to emergency situations. So our staff takes that, uh, those goals very seriously. Um, and the North Carolina, uh, AWWA and WEA associations have recognized that, and so for the second year in a row, uh, they have given us the Disaster Preparedness Award. Um, and that award is to recognize outstanding achievement in disaster preparedness initiative, initiatives addressing natural disasters, disasters caused by humans and acts of aggression. And so, uh, just to give you an example of how, uh, we utilize our disaster preparedness plan, you probably all recall in twenty eighteen, we had a lot of our customers out of service due to Hurricane Florence. And so, um, this with PTC number eight, a lot of those same roads, um, that were, you know, destroyed back in Hurricane Florence, they were destroyed again in PTC eight. We didn't have any averages in those same locations. Remember, we called Boiling Spring Lakes, all the dams that were out, Dustin Acres, uh, we had twenty-four inch pipe that was out. Uh, we're having problems getting water to the nuclear plant, to the hospital. We didn't have that in PTC eight because, um, after Hurricane Florence, um, we rebuilt those such that not only did we put the pipe back in the ground, but we put it back in the ground and the way that make it more resilient. And that's because staff right after the storm is part of our disaster preparedness plan. When we have disaster, we look at not only how we can quickly rebuild the infrastructure, but how we can rebuild it in a resilient way so we don't have the issue again. And so that's why it was very effective, um, back in twenty eighteen. We did have a couple of, uh, roadways that blew out, um, that were different from Hurricane Florence. And so we will be, um, taking that same approach for those couple that occurred here with PTC eight and the repairs, we're gonna make it as more resilient. And so we're asking board to recognize staff and to accept the disaster preparedness award.
Very good.
Who needs to come up for that? Anybody?
Okay, don't let it come up.
We want to go down there.
So we, we have, uh, members of the staff, all recognized, so. Let's go to Stan Oliver Miller. Um, he's, uh, in a, uh, project management group in Boon Knox, which you'll see Cody Knox play on.
We'll come down and do it.
They might not want to be pictured with us. Getting the oldies together. Me too.
Thank you. No, I don't worry, but one, one, two, three, one, two.
Now, I didn't notice that you, uh, you had more than one award, so you must have something else on the agenda, right?
I do, yes, we're not.
So we got the picture out of the way anyway, so, so continue forward.
Okay, so we, we didn't only receive the disaster preparedness award, but we also received the large water distribution system on the Euro award. Um, at the NC, uh, AWWA, WA conference this year, uh, and that's for all, all throughout North Carolina. And this award is given to the large distribution, uh, system that has demonstrated, uh, system, um, performance and water quality, system maintenance and procedures for the efficient use of labor, materials, equipment and innovative methods to keep its distribution system in good working condition while minimizing health risks. So we, we have a very large distribution system. We have over thirteen hundred miles of waterman. Um, so that's, uh, a, a very large system, we're very spread out. And I just want to say with our, our staff, um, they did this while working at about eighty to eighty-five percent staffing. Despite the fact that we're one of the fastest growing, um, counties. And so we have a tremendous amount of development work, uh, installing meters, et cetera. And so they're not stopping the maintenance of the systems so they can focus on that. We're doing both of those. So staff is doing an excellent job, um, in maintaining the system.
John?
How many years in a row have we won this particular award?
So we had a, a, a little hiatus, and so, well, we have, I, I think we've won this award probably, um, five or six times since I've been here. But it's been a couple of years since we've won, uh, this particular award. So we're happy to be in the, the winners group again.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Even Michael Jordan didn't win all six.
That's right.
And I'm assuming you're gonna tell us about Cody next.
Exactly. Cody Knox, who was up here a moment ago, um, he won the, uh, North Carolina One Water Distribution System Operator of the Year Award. Um, so one of the things that we do at Brunswick County Utilities is we emphasize, um, giving it a accreditation, accreditation of operators. And so, uh, we have a very highly skilled workforce. Um, uh, we have probably some of the, the, the most operators, um, certified, um, uh, as certified operators of the system by percentage of any utility in state. And so Cody is one of our exemplary operators. Um, he's the man that is in charge of making sure all of our water pump stations run effectively. Um, Cody is just a joy to work with. He is always ready to help out. He helps customers and base care customer complaints. And he makes sure our, our system is running, um, especially when we get into these big peak flows in summertime, uh, we call on him a lot. So I'd like to, will you go back up here? Anyway, we're asking that board recognize Cody and the work that he does along with, uh, his fellow staffs.
And you can turn around for pictures, Cody.
Good job, Cody.
For picture.
John, you know, uh, I got word today that the, the, uh, city of Asheville just, uh, released their boil water, uh, authority or order today. Uh, uh, because of, uh, Hurricane Helene. So I know that being ready and I know that being prepared is a huge thing in the utility area. Uh, the things that I saw that Asheville was having to go through to maintain just water, uh, even, even with the, uh, boil water requirement was, uh, was something that was amazing. So, uh, all these utilities across our state, y'all do an amazing job. And I know Brunswick County is far superior. We, we really appreciate everything that y'all do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you again. All right, so, uh, next up, we're looking at, uh, our bond order. Hey, boy, I've been waiting for this one all night.
You seem excited.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you are having a really deja vu. That's a correct feeling. You just did this on November fourth, however, on November fourth, it was the initial bond or preliminary bond order. This is the final bond order. It's exactly the same issue. Rebalancing up to thirty-nine million dollars of debt. Uh, we would expect after all the costs associated with issuing fifty bonds, they have a net savings of at least one point seven million dollars. Um, and should the market change before we actually sell the bonds, um, in January that fell outside our policy limits for savings, which is, we save, we can save three percent or more. Two percent even right now, it's about four and a half percent. But should it drop below that, we would let you know and cancel it.
There you go. So do I hear a motion?
I'll second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Any none? All in favor, right?
Thank you, Aaron.
All right, so are you gonna talk to us about design bill contract?
This, this is the agreement, uh, for design bill for the health and human services and emergency operations. Center building, uh, this will be our first general, um, design bill contract, um, and the agreement later presentation on, on the concept and recommendation is, is last being with us. And Brian and other staff have, have worked to work out the final terms of the agreement. Uh, essentially with design bill and in this agreement, uh, we would be hiring Edith Construction and, and their partners to basically manage the entire process, beginning with design, preliminary design, leading to producing construction documents. Uh, and then put out the subcontract, um, out, out to bid. The, this agreement is for about a little bit less than three hundred million dollars, I think, three point four one, something. Uh, and there would be about another million dollars for construction observation, uh, that really wouldn't come into play until the next phase. So this phase is for all the engineering and work up to the point that you come to the point you have, uh, the final design and maybe you can get a guaranteed minimum price, not, give the guaranteed maximum price for the project, you can make a final decision on that. Uh, that will take about a year. And so you have the same team all the way through the process. And total design and every side fees are really only about a little less than five percent. I'd say four point seven five percent for the project, which is well below those fees and conditional profit. Of course, if you have the same part of doing, they can get some of their profit from the actual construction side of, of the contract of, we believe this is the most timely and the most cost-effective way to move forward on this sort of project. We should, this is a agreement, we really should be ready for a CO, uh, the end of calendar year twenty-six. So it should be able to be done in about two years.
I hear a motion.
Nearly a hundred thousand square foot building. I'll make that motion.
Yeah, second.
Motion second. Any further dissent? Any none? All in favor, right? Very good. All right. So now we're back to our strategic plan amendment. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, page doctor. And yes, we are back on November fourth, and you regularly, the board asked for staff to come back with a proposed wording on the new goal and focus area that you all would like to add to the strategic plan. And so we took the feedback that we had and the ideas that we had from you all from that meeting and have presented, uh, recommended goal focus area, the sixth one, uh, engagement and connection. And I have it, I can kind of run through it real quick, um, but mainly we've had, uh, the main concept of this whole focus area, engagement and connection is to strengthen community relationships, public trust and understanding of county government's role in the vulnerabilities within proactive strategic and inclusive efforts and initiatives. And underneath that focus area will be three core objectives. The first two are new and the third is actually one that is existing in the strategic plan currently, but we felt that it would work best under this new goal, we think, and the topic and the theme of that. So the first of the two new objectives would be objective number one, to create and sustain opportunity to connect with community members to educate about county departments and topics, collect public input and inspire constructive dialogue between staff and residents. The second new objective is use existing or new channels, tools and technologies to connect, engage and communicate with residents and important audience groups with helpful, accurate and relevant information. And then objective number three is currently objective number three under the focus area Excellent Government. And we're just proposing to move it under this focus area. And that is to create an environment where residents feel respected and engage in calm government decisions. So wanted to get you back from you all who feel that this aligns with the intent that you all have, because some of us have believed in that. And then, uh, if you feel, uh, like you need more, like, remember document, um, this event to the strategic plan.
Chairman, if I may.
You may.
First of all, thank you for the work you put into this. I think you did a better job of wording my idea than I did two weeks ago, so I appreciate you pulling it together and putting it into this form and, um, I'd be happy to move approval.
Okay, got a motion for approval? In a second? All in favor, right? Very good.
Thank you.
All right. And now we'll move into board appointments and we've got a, uh, no district, one has a library board appointment. And I would move forward with, uh, Yvonne Allen.
I'll second.
And I've got a second. Any further discussion here? None? All in favor, right? All right. And then the next one is District Four.
He stepped out for a second.
He stepped out for a moment. Let's give him just a moment. And. Yeah, I mean.
We just put it all over. I just heard.
I hear Doris Scotland, so he's going to be coming back that way.
So cheer when he comes out?
We got, no. Hey, man.
We're all waiting on it.
Eight, eight, nine, ten, or eleven?
Oh, what else to this?
I thought we were still talking to Megan.
Oh, we approved that. You voted for it.
I, I had sent you. Yeah, I thought so. Charles Franka?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Brian? Very good. All right. I believe we got a, I believe we got a closed session.
Can I ask the question before closed session? Please. I noticed that we, we, in, in the consent, we ordered more ambulances. Has the other ambulances we ordered come in yet? And how many are those for other? So this would be, give us eleven? Okay. How, well, when did we order those service? It's been a while.
Couple of years.
It was with the, yeah, with the fun.
Really? It's taken like three years.
I'm getting confused about it here. This, this is the new concept that could deliver them unless they're.
Okay. I was just curious, that was all that is.
Ask a question about, let me ask you first about that. I'm, I talked to some of the guys that are in the trucks and we've had some trucks that had not a lot of room in them. Not right this second, but some of them that we've ordered previously didn't have a lot of room in them. Have we really talked to the guys in, you know, the running the trucks and asking them, does this give you enough room and everything? Cause I think sometimes the calves can be extended or something for a very little amount of money, but it would actually make a big difference on a paramedic's comfort along, during long term. And, and they live in the trucks basically. So have, have we gotten feedback from them as far as does this work for you? Is this, is there a kind of issue? Do we go through that vetting process or is it just an economic thing? Okay. You're good. Yeah, cool.
The comment that I heard was that they didn't have room for their lunchbox.
That's what I heard. Yeah, I heard that.
You hear that too? So isn't that amazing?
Yes.
I didn't know people brought lunchboxes in work anymore, but hey, I must be committed for doing that, but.
Staff believe that the ones that we ordered last fall would have room for lunchboxes in there.
Now, I will share this with you and I don't know where we're purchasing these from. But purchasing, you know, they always talk about purchase local, purchase local. Ash County has a tremendous EMS production facility, which I was amazed in the mountains of nowhere where the only thing you, you, you've got there is a Christmas tree farm that they're producing cheese. I forgot about cheese. But, but the, the facility is huge with the amount of units that they turn over, but they may not be the appropriate units. They may not have a lunchbox area.
Well, now, now, when I worked in Charleston, we actually built ambulances. The company I worked for actually built ambulances and, and produced them and sold them. And so operations out there. I mean, we're being facetious about the lunchbox. I mean, the thing is you live in a truck.
I mean, if they take time to call a commissioner.
What they're saying is, is that they're saying they need enough room in the truck for what they need to have in the truck with them is basically what they're saying. And they're in there a long time. And so my point, Megan, is we're going to make sure that they have enough space to be able to cover what they need.
We, we, we are, you know, we are finding the humor in it, but, but in all, all seriousness, you know, when you need them, you, you need them and we need them. And it's, it would be good to kind of get their feedback on what their working condition and environment would be. Lunchbox area. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Ken.
Y'all have a good, all right. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I do. Under, under some new business or. I meant close session. Under informal discussion, Monty and I attended the Legislative Goals Conference Thursday and Friday up in Raleigh. And I, there was three things I wanted to, I wrote down because I wanted to bring back here for today's meeting. A hundred and forty-three thousand people a year are moving into North Carolina as a whole. Three hundred and ninety people per day are moving into North Carolina. And the entire state of North Carolina is thirty-five million acres. What was pointed out, why these numbers actually came up is we are far from overcrowded. Certain areas, of course, Mecklenburg County, Wake County, I get it. But the point of them even bringing this up is that, you know, everybody's screaming about overdevelopment, but we're not even close. And another interesting thing that came up, which is actually quite sad. You're aware that there's a hundred and thirty-six people on death row in the state of North Carolina? A hundred and thirty-four men and two women. One guy's been on death row, Marty, am I lying? For thirty-eight years. Has exhausted most of his appeals, but he's in the middle of his last one. That guy's going to be at forty years on death row. It, it, that, that was incredible to me that we have that many people. Well, in that same vein, they brought up that there's a hundred mental health beds that are empty in the state of North Carolina because they don't have staffing. Yep. The other thing you brought up was that across the state, DSS is having to house children in their facilities and even one county is building a facility just for that purpose. But at that point, we had a member of the General Assembly said, if you have that situation, you contact me and I'll address that. And didn't you say that seventy-six, did you say seventy-six percent of the county of Brunswick is Tampa?
Roughly seventy-six percent.
So that's the green slot then, right?
Lot, lot of it, yeah. That's based on about three-year-old data from the Forestry Service. I guess we're doing the other business and informal discussion now.
I guess we are.
I had a couple of things.
Well, if we're going to do that, I have some stuff too.
Get your stuff ready. Let's let him.
My two quick things. Number one, I got a call last week and was appointed to the NACO Intergovernmental Disaster Reform Task Force. And any feedback you guys have on this, two, a couple of specific things they want to come out of this are specific tangible actionable recommendations for changes in federal policy related to disasters, especially ways to help money move faster, things like that, to get it back to where it needs to go. And Chairman Thompson, I know with your professional background, you probably especially got ideas on that. And ways to emphasize the importance of including counties in the discussion at the federal level. So those are the two big things. And then second thing I had was we talked about appointing two commissioners to our own after action task force on PTC eight and we still, I think we still need to do that, whether it's today or at the next meeting. I don't know who would be interested. Maybe do that at the next meeting.
Maybe at the next meeting, if y'all will just keep that in the back of your minds, that's it going to come up. All right. So Commissioner Sykes.
Well, I was kind of disappointed in, in the planning department not adopting some of these ordinances. They did adopt some and I don't understand why I asked for the minutes and we still haven't gotten the minutes of that meeting. The open space, there's no issue that it shouldn't be changed and the usable recreation area. These amendments are so simple and just would be an asset, I think, to the development to make them, because I rode down to Myrtle Beach because I had to go to a ball game. And it's so sad to see the houses on top of houses and no trees. I have never in my life, and that's what we're going to look like. If you want to see how Brunswick County is going to look, then you need to ride down to Myrtle Beach and see the houses and no trees. There is nothing in the development but houses. And they got palm trees. That's it.
Well, they're.
On the outskirts.
They're working on that to have.
Well, but, but, but I think it would be very beneficial if these would go ahead and be adopted. And then we wouldn't, and then we'd go ahead with the U D O. But these are just things that is common sense and I would like to see them adopted. And I know that I, I don't know if I would get a second, but I would make a motion that we adopt them. So if you haven't read them, you need to read them, but take a ride down to Myrtle Beach and see what you see.
Would it, would it, and we don't have anybody from planning here now seeing anybody. Maybe at the next meeting, we could have someone from planning available at the meeting to, to, to hear Commissioner Sykes' concerns over, over this, just so we can, we can address that. I know we've got some activity going on at the next meeting, but I think it would be a, a good topic to, to resolve.
We'll have, have them here and also remind you once the planning board takes final action, whether it be a critical or denial, the final decision still rests with the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Board's an advisory body. And if you wish to adopt all or part of what they have denied, you can, you can still do that. And I think I send all of you a summary of the actual votes. And as soon as the court to their board has the minutes available, we'll get your call about that too.
I think, I think that would probably be helpful because it's hard to, it's hard, i- if you're not there and you don't watch the, the video of it, I think it's challenging not to have the minutes to read exactly what the discussion was because I don't want you know, the, obviously I've had heartburn over it, but I don't want to, I want to make sure that I've truly evaluated the, the discussion that took place and not go on what I think it was. And so that's, I, you know, so I agree too that.
Now, they did approve some.
Yeah, I mean, and so I think, I think if we had that available to us, I think that would be. I mean, I think we're working on a number of things, just like the storm order this evening that, that, you know, are things that are important to the county for the future. And, and I think everybody participated well in that. So I think, you know, it's something that we, we certainly will embrace once it comes up. Yes, sir.
Yes, I was just going to say, Steve mentioned, when it does come with text amendments, the planning board is strictly advisory only. They use the recommendation for denial or approval as the standard course of business for text amendments. Because they are the second Monday of the month and are evening weeks or the third Monday of the month. The board typically hears protection amendments the next month on the evening weeks. So we would have heard it had there been a second meeting in December. So going according to the next, the current schedule, we need to hear it at the meeting.
Okay. So, so by what you just said, if they do not take action, somebody is going to bring it forward to us for action, correct? I mean, if it's presented to them and they desire not to take action, then it's going to come to this board.
There is, there is a, a period of that if they say continue to tackle it and just didn't take action, we would still move it forward to you for a decision. I think that's sixty days, but I'm not sure when you start counting sixty days.
So, so are you going to go back and look at all the items that had been before the planning board? And if it had, if they haven't taken action on all those, you going to go ahead and bring them back to us? Okay, cool. Got to end somewhere.
Well, I was just wondering, was this the first time that they did these or was this the second time?
At least the second.
I know. I think it's been the second time.
If my understanding is correct, the last one, I don't think they tabled anything else. It was either recommendations for denial or recommendations.
I mean, these, these are not bad changes.
Oh, right.
I thought they did.
The meeting without taking some of them off because I think it was ten thirty.
Well, all of these were voted on. The only thing they didn't take up was the T, uh, T O C, which they, they scheduled that for December the ninth. So the rest, they approved two. And seven and eight.
Okay. So we got a plan? All right. Is there anything else?
Close session.
All right, sir. Close session?
Yes, sir. I'm going to enter in a closed session. So the general said it one forty-three, fifty-eight, ten eleven, eight one. And finally, approve the session events and so will the attorney and discuss the acquisitions.
So move. You got a motion, sir? All in favor, right? Right.